I'd like to turn to Board Member Deborah Napper to open our meeting up.
If you would please stand for the first allegiance in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now for a moment of silence.
Thank you. We are now at approval of the agenda. Is there a motion? Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Diane, Diane is Board Member Bellamy Small is on the phone. Diane, how do you vote on the agenda?
Yep.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Dr. Contreras?
Thank you, and good evening to our board members and to our guests and those who are watching. This evening, I'd like to present the 2022-2023 budget. And I will be presenting a budget that continues to focus on the board's strategic priorities. To address the priorities and the concerns that we have, which include facilities concerns and the pandemic learning loss, I recommend seeking 18.75 million in new funding from the county commissioners to support the following compensation initiatives: 10 million to increase our local teacher supplement, 5.5 million to complete Phase 1 of our classified staff study, and 3.25 million to improve our local principal and assistant principal salary supplement. The proposed budget also includes the 8.5 million increase in funding needed to sustain our current service levels by matching state mandated pay and benefit cost increases for locally paid teachers, principals, and support staff that were included in the legislature's biennial budget. The increased funding would also pay for higher costs for utilities and liability insurance. In addition, 3.36 million in new local funding will be needed to pay for anticipated increases in charter school enrollment. To help offset these costs, district leadership has identified savings of 1.56 million, resulting in a recommended net increase of 25.7 million in local funding. In addition, my budget recommendation includes 10 million in capital outlay funds for deferred maintenance projects, including HVAC upgrades, roof repairs, outdoor lighting, and safety and security improvements. If approved by the school board and funded by county commissioners, Guilford County Schools' operating budget for the 2022-2023 school year will be 251.31 million excluding capital outlay. Local funding would account for 25.3% of GCS's proposed operating budget, while state and federal funding would contribute 46.2% and 28.5%, respectively. At this time, I'll turn this over to our CFO, Angie Henry, who will walk you through the specifics of the budget.
Thank you, Dr. Contreras. Good evening, Board. In front of you, you should have your budget book for the 2223 budget recommendation. In that budget book, there is the superintendent's budget message. There also, I want to bring your attention to the Budget Report tab, where there are reports by fund of the two years of audited information, the current year budget, and then the budget request is included by fund under this tab. So I know oftentimes, we get asked for detailed information, and this is where it has been in the budget presentations we've made for the last several years. And then, under the Appendix tab, you'll see the PowerPoint presentation that we're going to go through this evening. Okay. As the superintendent mentioned, we did bid our budget with the strategic priorities in mind, the five. Just to remind you of what those are, we've got reimagine excellent schools, eradicate gaps in access, preparation and achievement, improve operational efficiency, create pathways to prosperity, and invest in our people. First thing I want to talk about are teacher allocations. Many of you may have heard from schools this year that they are having reductions in teaching positions in their allocations for 2223. And I want to talk a little bit about why that is. We haven't, in our budget, made a cut to teaching positions. But as we go through our formulas and how the state has funded us in the last several years, I think you'll be able to understand what's happening in our schools. So at elementary schools, our core teacher allotment formulas, and again, these haven't changed, for 2223, per state statute, in kindergarten, we allocate one teacher for 18 students, and the class size cannot exceed 21. In grade 1, it's 1 to 16, with a class size not to exceed 19. And then grades 2 and 3, it's 1 to 17, with a class size not to exceed, I'm sorry, 20. In 4th and 5th grade, GCS allocates, we try to stick as close as we can to 29 students per teacher when possible. In our middle school grades, the 2022-23 allotment formulas haven't changed again. For middle schools that are included in the lowest 25 schools in the district and performance, receive 23 to 1, one teacher for 23 students in grades 6 through 8. And all of our other middle schools receive one teacher for 24 students in grades 6 through 8. At the high school level, for 2223, just like we have in the past, our grades 9 and 10, we get one teacher for 27 students and one teacher for 29 students in grades 11 and 12. So what we've seen nationwide, we've seen a decrease in public school enrollment from 2019-20 to 2021. You can see on this map, again, nationally, you can see where states are losing public school enrollment. When we look specifically at North Carolina, you can see between 2019-20 and 2020-21, across the state, we lost about 4.4% in public school enrollment. That's about 63 fewer students. You can see only two districts across the state gained students from month 2 ADM, that's Mount Aries City Schools and Elkin City Schools. All other school districts lost ADM of at least 1% or greater, with Rowan Salisbury Schools and Weldon City Schools losing the greatest percentage at nearly 18%. If you look at just numbers, the biggest decline in ADM is in Charlotte Mecklenburg, followed by Wake County, then followed by Rowan Salisbury Schools, Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, and then Guilford County Schools. So when we lose ADM, based on the state formula, we would expect to lose teaching positions, or our allocation of teaching positions would decrease. When we look at the way the state has funded us for teachers in the last, I'm going to say, four years, and we're going to start with 1920 on this chart, the state allocated us 3,317.5 teachers, based on an allotted ADM in 2019-20 of 71,926. Our actual ADM at the end of the second month, it's the best of the first month or second month, was 71,268. So the state made an adjustment to our teacher allotment of reduction of 11 teaching positions. And that's what happened to us in 1920. When we moved to 2021, the state allotted us 3,338.5 teachers, based on an allotted enrollment of 71,331 students. Our actual ADM at the end of month 2 was 68,387 students. If we applied, if the state kind of applied the same formula and made a reduction, we would have expected to have lost about 50 teachers in 2021. But you could see, the state held us harmless that year. So we had teachers in our district, based on the 71,331 projected enrollment. The same thing happened again in 2021-22, where we, the state allotted teachers based on projected enrollment of 70,760. Our actual enrollment was 67,738. Again, the state didn't take any teachers. An adjustment for best of one of two, they held us harmless. The difference you see between the number of teachers that were allotted in 2020-21 and 2021-22 are the program enhancement teachers, I made it in the footnote, including the footnote, they moved those to a different category. So that's where the 160 teachers went. It wasn't a reduction in the number of classroom teachers. They just put the program enhancement teachers in a different category. So we didn't lose teaching positions based on enrollment for the last two years. So those teachers stayed in our schools. This year, our projected enrollment has gone down. What we are anticipating, our initial allotment, has gone down by 54 teaching positions. And so that's what schools are experiencing when they see, or when they're allotted, teaching positions have been reduced from prior years.
That would help, right? As we lose teacher positions, it also impacts our leadership as well, am I correct? The admin positions.
So the teaching, the admin position formula for principals is based on number of schools with 100 students or more. The assistant principal allocation is based on student enrollment.
Right.
Projected student enrollment, yes.
Right.
Our budget for 2223 continues to include COVID relief spending. You can see here all the categories that we have budgeted our COVID relief spending for. Our estimated carryover for our COVID relief spending is about $222.9 million. That's what we are projecting to have at June 30. When we look at the COVID relief spending that flowed to us through our state public school fund, you can see all the different categories that were funded and how much we've spent. We've spent 100% of the dollars that came to us through our state public school fund. When we look at the categories of spending and dollars that were allocated to us in the federal grants fund, you can see that we received allocations of about $327.6 million. Of that, we've spent $104.7 million, or 32% of the total COVID relief spending we've got. And just to show it in a different way, you can see, from June 20 to September 2024, which is the timeline that we have to spend these dollars, we have $327.6 million to spend between June 20 and March 2022. You can see that we've spent 104.7, or about 32%. So we feel like we're right on track where we need to be as far as the pace of our spending goes with COVID relief dollars. So what are we asking for new in our 2022-23 budget? The first thing is our teacher supplement. When we look at teacher attrition for 2020-2021 and compare ourselves to the state and other counties that we typically compare ourselves to, you can see that we are right on par with what's happened across the state. Only Wake County has got a lower teacher attrition rate for 2020-2021. When we think about the supplement, if you'll recall, the superintendent did request in our 2021-22 budget, $10 million to increase our teacher supplement as part of a phased-in approach to bring Guilford County to the highest teacher supplement in the state. The county commissioners did fund $8 million in 2122 specifically for the teacher supplement. Last year as well, new Hanover County Schools, their county-funded dollars to bring their teacher supplement to the highest in the state. It didn't end up that way, but they were really, really close. They more than doubled their teacher supplement. And again, for the 2021 fiscal year, Wake County used $40 million in local funding. They made this announcement in December of 2021 to increase the teacher supplement by another 1.5% effective July 21, 2021, to bring them above where New Hanover was. For 2223, as the superintendent mentioned, we're requesting $10 million again to address our teacher supplement. The superintendent in Charlotte, in his budget request, also included a request for dollars for, as part of his $41 million request to bring teacher supplements to the highest in the state. And then Durham Public Schools, in their budget request for 2022-2023, has asked for more, $4 million to bring their teacher supplement from $56.75 to $6,500. As a reminder, the new state, the $100 million in the new, the state funded for supplement, teacher supplements, Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, when you look at what they would receive, they would receive about $2.8 million to boost their teacher supplements. On average, that would be about $619 for every state-funded teaching position. The money will come from the $100 million, the new recurring $100 million fund that the state created to increase teacher supplements in the low-wealth counties. And as you know, Wake, Durham, Buncombe, Mecklenburg, and Guilford Counties were not included in that funding, or not eligible for that funding. Certainly, Orange County is. So when we compare our teacher supplement, when we look at the impact of the $8 billion that we received from the county commissioners for 2021-22, you can see we did move above Forsyth County. Now, this graph does not have the money, the state money for Forsyth County in there. It had not been received and had not been paid out by the time the reporting had to be done for DPI for this report, to report the local teacher supplement. But again, we're one of the five counties that was excluded from the $100 million. We also are requesting $2 million for our principal supplement. When we compare principal supplements, the top 10 in the state, you can see that Guilford County is number 10. We're behind Forsyth County, which is number 2, Durham County, which is number 3. And I think you've heard that we are consistently losing good principals to those counties. We're also behind Wake County and Charlotte Mecklenburg County here. Wake did increase their principal supplement in that same action they took in December 2021, part of their $40 million in local funding that they used to increase the principal supplement by 2.5%. Our assistant principal supplement looks very similar to what we saw with the principal supplement. You can see out of the top 10, Guilford County is ninth in the state. We are behind, again, Wake County, Charlotte Mecklenburg County, Forsyth County, and Durham County for our assistant principal supplement. And we are, we do have a request of 1.25 million to start addressing that in the 2223 budget request. And again, Wake County adjusted their assistant principal pay along with all the other adjustments they made in December 2021. This past year, we have started work on, or we've had partners start work on a compensation study for our classified staff. The purpose of that study is to provide equitable and effective compensation program that retains and attracts talent needed to achieve our organizational goals. The scope of the work is to update the job profiles to complete a market study of total compensation. Those two parts of the work have been complete. We're also, they're also working to develop a compensation strategy and to redesign our compensation system. So as you know, the job market is still very volatile, volatile and plagued with talent shortages. And that certainly has an impact on school districts that are struggling to hire talent that we desperately need in our classified positions. North Carolina is the fourth highest state in regards to the number of new jobs added post-pandemic, which just creates more competition for a limited staffing or labor pool. Nearly 73% of the businesses are struggling to attract employees, and that's because there's such a high demand for skilled workers. And as we, as a result of that, the great resignation is expected to continue, and job openings are predicted to continue, outpacing unemployed workers. The most effective way to retain talent in a nationwide labor shortage is to make, across the board, market-based salary increases. There's a great reprioritization of work, rewards, and careers underway with the labor force today, and it's putting significant pressure on compensation programs for many schools, and, yeah, many school districts. And employees are looking for more than just salaries. They're looking for sign-on bonuses, equity, cash retention, recognition enhancements, career, enhanced career enablement, emphasis on mental well-being, focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion, and learning and re-skilling opportunities. So it's not just about what you can offer as far as a salary anymore. The base pay is expected to increase an average of 3.9% in 2022. And finally, we expect wages for new hires and workers in blue-collar and manual service jobs are going to grow faster than average. And the faster wage growth of new hires creates pay compression for those who are more experienced in our workforce. And that puts further pressure on employers to raise pay across the board. As the superintendent mentioned, we do have $5.5 billion included in this recommendation to address Phase 1 of this compensation study that would increase salary to entry level of a pay range that's been identified for a select group of staffing positions where we are having significant issues filling vacancies or significant challenges filling vacancies for these positions. So again, as we look at the 2223 budget, we do have the 18.75 million to address the teacher supplement. 10 million of that's to address the teacher supplement. 2 million of that is to address the principal supplement. 1.25 million is the assistant principal supplement. And then 5.5 million for the classified staff compensation study, the first phase of that. The legislative impact of salary increases, you can see, we expect our teachers, based on the salary schedule that was included in the second year of the biennial budget, we expect teachers to receive salary increases between 1.3% and 5.35%. For our locally funded teachers, that's about $960,000. Our assistant principals are going to experience a similar increase. Most of their pay is based on the teacher A schedule. And so we, for our locally funded assistant principals, that's going to be about a $77,000 cost. Our principals are going to have a 2.5% increase, again, based on the second year of the biennial budget, 2.5% salary increase. We don't have locally funded principals because the state has covered the cost of ours, so we won't have a local cost for that. Our central office staff will receive a 2.5% salary increase. And then our non-certified personnel will receive a 2.5% increase, or $15 an hour, whichever is higher. Those two add up to about $1.34 million, bringing the total cost for locally funded legislative salary increases to $2.38 million. Our benefit rates are increasing. Our retirement rate's going from 22.89% in the current year to 24.19% in 2223. That's an increase of 5.7%. And then our hospitalization rates going from 7,019 per FTE to 73.97 per FTE, another 5.4% increase in dollars. The retirement rate increase will cost us, for our locally funded staff, $1.08 million. And then for our locally funded staff, $440,000 for the increase in hospitalization rate. It's also important to note that as these benefits continue, rates continue to increase, certainly, it's going to, okay, certainly, it's going to increase the cost of employee, one staff member. If we look at an individual making $45,000 a year, the new cost of benefits is going to be 48% of that salary.
I just want to clarify on the retirement rate. The change is the percentage change between the rate, but the last column is the cost increase? They both say change, and one says percent change, but they're both percentages, just trying to...
The change is the 24.19 minus the 22.89.
Right, so that's the percent of the rate.
Right, and then that's a 5.7% increase in the rate.
In cost or in the rate?
It's in the rate.
So it's a 1.3 point, a 1.3-point change.
Right, 1.3, yeah, 1.3, 22.89 is 5.7%. So in total, that's, the benefit rate increase is going to cost us 1.52 million for our locally funded staff. As the superintendent mentioned, we do have sustaining operation costs. We are expecting an increase of 256 students in charter schools, which would equal about a $3.36 million increase cost. We're anticipating increases in utilities. We know Duke Energy has told us that our electric's going up in September by 9%. So we're estimating a $952,000 cost associated with that. And then our liability insurance continues to climb, and we're budgeting about $300,000 for that increase, bringing the total for sustaining operations to $4.61 million. So in total, when you add all of these together, we've got the 1.875 million for employee compensation. The legislative impact for salaries is $2.38 million. For benefits, it's $1.52 million. And sustaining operations, the $4.61 million. We did identify some reductions and redirections that we can use to offset a portion of these, bringing our total ask of the county commissioners to $25.7 million. We also are requesting for our annual capital maintenance funds, $10 million. We've identified $3,887,500 in HVAC projects, $2 million for safety and security, $1.5 million for field lighting, $1,322,000 for roofing projects, $890,500 for system outside work, and this is paving, some tennis court work, system-wide finishes, $400,000, that's flooring, and things like that. So again, our total request is $10 million. As we look at the summary for our state public school fund, our recommended budget's $465 million, $485,369. That's based on using the 2021-22 allotment formulas that we've made an estimated adjustment for the impact of the salary and benefit increases. The state is allotting us for 2223 69,428 students. For our local current expense fund, our total recommended budget's $254,913,822. Of that, the request from the county commissioners is $251,310,398, an 11.39% increase over the 2122 county appropriation of $225.6 million. Also included in our local fund budget are fines and forfeitures, $3 billion, and then interest earned on investments of $603,000. Our federal grants fund is using our 2122 actual or planning allotments plus the estimated carryover that I mentioned earlier, bringing our total federal grants fund recommendation to $286,595,462. bring our total federal grants fund recommendation to two hundred and eighty-six million, five hundred and ninety-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars. We don't yet have our twenty-two, twenty-three federal planning allotments. They haven't been released by DPI at this time. So when we look at our total operating budget and look at our state, local and federal, you'll see we're just over a billion dollars. We're a billion, six million, nine hundred and ninety-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars. This graphic is not what we're used to seeing. You can see our federal grants fund has got twenty-eight point five percent. We're used to seeing that in the seven to nine percent range. But because of all the COVID relief spending or dollars that we've got, that's why that number is higher than we're used to seeing. And that, of course, has an impact on the state percentage and our local percentage as well. When you see where the money is being spent, again, you can see that this has been impacted by the COVID relief dollars. We've got seventy point eight percent on salaries and benefits. If you'll recall in prior years, that's been around eighty percent. But because of the COVID relief spending that's included in this budget, you can see that that number's lower. And we've impacted our purchase services and our supplies and material and our equipment. Those numbers have gone up compared to where they typically have been. And then again, you'll see the same thing here. Normally what we spend in schools is, is over eighty percent. Now it's seventy-seven point one percent. And you can see the other areas have, have changed from what we're used to seeing in our, in previous budget recommendations. So again, when we look at our, the total budget recommendation for twenty-two, twenty-three, you can see our state fund has increased, and that's again because of salary and benefit increases. Our local fund has increased, and we've gone through the reasons that, that we've included there with the compensation and the legislative impacts and the sustaining operations. Our federal fund has gone down. That's a result of the spending that we saw. You saw that we had spent a hundred and four million of the ESER money. So that's, that's the biggest reason for the decrease there. Our capital outlay fund is going, we've requested ten billion compared to the four million that we received from the county in twenty-one, twenty-two. Our child nutrition fund has dropped slightly. As you've heard during our, at our last board meeting, our waivers end on June thirtieth. We don't, haven't heard anything about the potential of those being extended. So that's going to change the way school nutrition, we're going to go back to the way we've operated in the past for school nutrition. Our ACEs fund is down a little bit. Our enrollment is not where we thought it was going to be for twenty-one, twenty-two. So we're taking that into consideration as we prepared the budget for twenty, did I say that right? Okay, for twenty-two, twenty-three. And then special revenue is up mostly due to the indirect costs that we're receiving from the COVID relief, the federal COVID relief funds. So if we go back to our strategic priorities, I want to go through just what we've included in the budget that goes along with each strategic priority. So when we look at reimagining excellent schools, we've included in our budget access to extended learning opportunities, including our high dosage tutoring, our learning hubs, our fifth quarter and extended school year for our lowest performing schools, our increase in our public and private partnerships between businesses, universities and school leaders, that one-to-one technology to enhance impersonalized learning. And we've expanded the innovation and choices that align with student interest and industry needs, particularly in our CTE programs. The strategic priority for eradicating, eradicating gaps in access, preparation and achievement, we've included in the budget expansion of our tutoring and learning hubs to support our most vulnerable students. Again, the extended learning time, including our summer school and the additional days in the calendar for our lowest performing schools. And then we've got significant investments in instructional materials and resources for all students. The work we're doing to improve operational efficiency, we continue to work on the implementation of a modern, fully integrated ERP and our enterprise resource planning system and a human capital management cloud-based software. We also are implementing a new bus routing system to provide service to families with greater efficiency. We have got dollars still in ESER in, in our capital request to repair and replace portions of HVAC systems. We're not, we haven't scheduled any full replacement of HVAC systems, but we are doing work in repairs in, in pieces, or parts of those systems. We also have the installation of safety and security measures across all schools. We're improving the district communications through unified communication voice-over IP implementation. And then we've increased the, the network bandwidth throughout the district. Creating pathways to prosperity. We've got strong post-secondary pathways that lead to high-skill credentials, the two gener, the dual-generation programming that effectively prepares students and their parents for jobs that earn a middle-class living standard. We've got in-state tuition assistance for GCS students who agree, agree to come back and teach for Gopher County schools. We've got college access by ensuring that students are completing the FAFSA in at least one college application. And then we've got the dual enrollment programs of the CCP and access to tuition-free college-level courses. And finally, investing in our people. We've got recruiting, retaining and rewarding highly effective staff in this budget. We've got the teacher career ladders, we'll continue with that. We've talked about the supplement increases we've got for our teachers, principals and assistant principals. The first phase of our classified staff compensation study, certification and stipends for mentors are still included in this budget. We've got job embedded professional learning, additional centers for low-performing schools that are, and hard to staff, subject area positions. We've got the career pathways and continuing the principal and assistant principal pipeline programs. So next steps in the budget, the board, this board will hold their public hearing on May tenth and approve their budget request to the Board of County Commissioners. We have to have that request submitted to the county commissioners no later than May fifteenth. On the nineteenth, the county manager is scheduled to present his budget recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. And then for the rest of May and potentially sometime in June, the, the county commissioners will hold work sessions as they work through their budget. They do have a public hearing that they'll hold on June second for, on their budget. And then they're scheduled on June twenty-third to, I'm sorry, on June sixteenth, they're scheduled to, to approve their budget ordinance. And then on June twenty-third, if the state hasn't passed or finalized their budget for twenty-two, twenty-three, we'll ask this board to approve an interim budget resolution until we can approve a final twenty-two, twenty-three budget and budget resolution. And with that, there are questions.
Thank you. I know you start working on the budget like last fall. And it's a behemoth and it's, I think, more complicated when you take something so complicated and help bring some elegant simplicity to it. It's actually harder to do that, I think. So I appreciate the work that goes into this. I think there's a philosopher talks about the simplicity on this side of complexity and the simplicity on the other side. And I think y'all slog through to get to the other side. I really appreciate that. Before I ask a couple of specific questions, can you just, because we go through this every year, but I know folks watching and we don't really know what the state's going to do, but there's assumptions in here about what the state's going to do. So can you just talk about if that's just based on last year or conversation with the state? How do you come to those assumptions? Because that's the sort of weirdest part of the whole thing is the bulk of our funding comes from the state and then we often don't know what they're doing until after the school year's even started.
Right. And that's, that's a very good question. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to, to mention that. So for twenty-two, twenty-three, or I guess I'll start with it. When the state passed their twenty-one, twenty-two biennial budget, they really included and did a lot of work for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. That's not always the case, but they do have a, a teacher salary schedule, a new principal salary schedule, benefit rates, and all that's based on what was included in the, in the biennial budget.
So the nitpicky number's like thirty dollars per student for supplies. We feel pretty confident that's what we're going to get, right?
Yeah, we're basing, we're just using this year's number and assuming it's going to stay the same. Unless, unless the number was impacted by, unless it's a funding, a funding source that funds salaries or benefits, we made the assumption.
Which is pretty staggering because, you know, as a parent or former parent of a, of school-aged kids, I, I spent a lot more than thirty bucks, you know, at Walmart or Target. I also see that there's thirty-two dollars per kid for textbooks from the state, which of course won't buy one textbook, but I know online they're less expensive. Do we have any idea what thirty bucks per kid will buy in instructional materials? Whitney's like, nothing, you know, some coloring books.
I mean, even digital are usually, for an annual subscription, would be closer to three hundred dollars per student. For like a biology textbook.
For one.
Right, for one.
One subject. Yeah. So, I mean, there are still just these huge gaps in the state budget despite, you know, it's the biggest part of the state budget. It is, of course, but that's because we fund schools differently than other states do. So it doesn't mean we're spending more than other states. It just looks like a big percentage of the budget. And while I think we're making some progress, these are significant challenges that we face as a district with this. I mean, thirty bucks a kid for supplies, I think supplies includes toilet paper and soap, doesn't it? Or, or does that come from somewhere else?
They, they don't fund custodial supplies.
Yeah. So we gotta come up with that somewhere else, right? So, and thirty-two dollars per kid, per student for books, materials, online curriculum is pretty staggering. So I would, I just, and there's others numbers in there, but those two really struck me. I would like either the superintendent or Whitney or Angie, you could speak to, on page fifty-two, this investment in instructional materials and resources, you know, is that ESER funds? Is that, I think it's, they're from different places. But given the limited funding we get from the state to provide the actual meat, you know, of what kids are learning. I mean, we, we need people. We cannot do it without teachers, but teachers need resources more than just Google. And so can you talk a little bit about what those are? And I saw a reference to that as well under the investing in our people and how we're providing both instructional materials and, and how you all are conceptualizing the professional development, training, equipping of our staff.
Right. Well, I, I will ask Dr. Oakley to speak specifically to that. But before she does, I'll just speak to sort of the misnomers about the, the ESER funds we receive and how much they can actually do. Because I often hear, wow, you receive three hundred million dollars. And when you think about the differences, three hundred million dollars might be for Guilford County and three hundred million dollars for our colleagues in Orange County, Florida, for example, who have new schools. And I use that example because Barbara Jenkins, the superintendent there, raised it herself. She doesn't have to spend a dime of that money on air filters or on anything for the buildings that we have to spend. So she can use that entire amount if she chose on learning loss. So there's a, a huge difference in the way in which the ESER funds are able to impact the students. So we have been pulled in many different ways to try to make up for first not being able to compensate employees fairly. So to get employees to fifteen dollars an hour and then to pay for bonuses because our teachers don't have the, a, a similar supplement to Wake and Charlotte. These are things that other districts across the country are not having to use their funds for. Then to pay for basic infrastructure needs that other districts are not using the funds for. And then we're asked, okay, we still want you to close the achievement gap and to make up for all of the learning loss from the pandemic with three hundred million dollars. That seems like a lot of money, but it's very little when you have two billion dollars in school construction needs, eight hundred million in deferred maintenance in twenty nineteen. So think how much more it is now. You have learning loss needs, you have all of these needs that people want you to address, rightly so. But you're asked to do it all with this pot of money because you're not receiving adequate funding at the state level. So with that, I'll turn it to Dr. Oakley to say, we've tried to do the best we can to address all of, as many of these things as we can, but we shouldn't have had to address compensation and facilities with ESER funds.
Thank you. So, great question. I think just talking a little bit and thinking backwards a little bit, when Dr. Contreras came in twenty sixteen and asked where the curriculum was, and there wasn't one, we started the work of bringing hundreds of teachers together and saying, what do you need? Getting their input and buy-in. That happened between twenty sixteen and twenty nineteen when those first access to instructional materials began. The state allocation for state textbooks is between like one point five and two million dollars each year. That's not even enough for one grade level adoption. And so we're just chipping away is really what we're doing. We started with the K eight literacy and math. We're in the process now of getting feedback from teachers. I will say that the first cohort of students who tested in twenty eighteen, nineteen were the ones that had had access to instructional materials when they were getting through elementary school. And that was the year that we saw our test scores improve across the board for every student group. And so we're, we were in a place of really gaining traction with the board's willingness to deeply invest in the job embedded professional coaching. To your point, what's in the ESER budget versus what's in instructional materials. Global language teachers hadn't had new textbooks in twenty-six years. Really twenty, like the copyright date was twenty-six years on the German's textbooks and the Spanish textbooks. And so we use some ESER funds to engage those teachers in selecting new resources, something we wouldn't have been able to touch without some of the supplemental funding. We also got some instructional resources specific for our gifted students, which we hadn't been able to do, our English learners, which we hadn't been able to do. And then we learned a lot in terms of the digital resource world. There is nothing like holding a book, and I will believe that forever. But there were also some things that went really well when we started the digital, when we had some digital resources. And so the teachers begged us to keep some of those, like being able to pull down high-interest articles in science and social studies for students in middle and high school who are at different abilities in terms of reading. And so those are some examples of what we've done with ESER. And then we've just kind of pieced along and been able to sustain in the other areas.
Can you just say a little bit about professional development and how that would unfold in this budget as well?
So somebody asked us during a board meeting, four or five years ago, when we would be done paying for professional learning. And I will always remember thinking about just the number of new and lateral entry teachers we had then. That was nothing compared to what we're facing now. The fact that we have more teachers who haven't been through a formal training program coming into the classroom, like they desperately need this coaching. And they, we also learned that the teachers and principals were like, please don't pull them out and give us a sub to teach them how to do this. Bring it to us in the classroom, shoulder to shoulder, in my classroom with my kids. We still aren't doing enough. But what we are doing is provides targeting our new and lateral entry teachers, our lowest performing schools, and kind of tiering them based on the number of coaching days that they need. This year, we've been able to do a little bit better job of differentiating the coaching for veteran teachers. Great, great athletes need a coach and great teachers do too. And so these professional learning funds are to sustain that professional learning, get it out of just literacy and math. Science teachers need coaches too. And focusing really on mentor training and then supporting those new and lateral entry teachers because we know those numbers are going to get bigger as we move forward. Did you want to add something?
Yeah, just that, Ed and C just reported that one-third of the state's teachers are lateral entry. So I hope that one of the legacies I will leave is that we never, ever say again that there's too much professional development or we're spending too much or it's too much for the teachers to bear. You can never learn too much. And we have to keep providing coaching and support to our classroom teachers because they are drowning with trying to figure out how to work with students who are at varying levels in their progress for reading, for math. Some are English language learners, some are new to the country, some just have struggled all of their educational lives. And we have to support both the principals with executive coaching. I think of some of the new principals who are in a position to become a, who have become principals much earlier than they would have been placed as a principal five years ago or ten years ago, and they need coaching. And this would never. And this would never be acceptable in the industry, in business industry, to put a leader in a position and not provide coaching. And I hope that will continue as much support as possible. However, the only professional development that is being funded by the state is reading. And I think that's at the elementary level. Everything else, we are funding out of our entitlement grants, which is a problem. There's no other funding to support a third of our teachers who have not gone through formal training.
Thank you. Pat and then Kim?
Thank you, Angie, for all the detail that's in here. I'm going to, I don't have a page number, but I'm going to throw this up. It's in the, I'm trying to, I'm going to try to go in order. I've got about three pages I pulled out. No, it's not in the blue line, yeah. But that's okay, we can, some have numbers, some don't, but that's all right. I'm trying, I'm going to try to go in order so it's easier to follow along. In the allotment, the actual ADM, that I understand presumably, and maybe you or Dr. Contreras can answer this, that was, I mean, COVID year, so numbers were way down. Was that based on, I mean, obviously attendance or some parents wanted to keep their children home or remote learning, what have you? Or what, because when I first got on the board, I mean, we had 73,600 students or something like that.
Right.
And so I see it's going down, but I understand that, yeah, so maybe talk a little bit about.
Right, so I mean, Guilford County is seeing what school districts across the state and across the nation are seeing decreases in enrollment between 2019, '20, which, you know, COVID, the pandemic started in March of 2020. And then as we move into the 2020, '21 school year, I don't know what else to say about it other than, I mean, that's just a trend we're seeing nationwide.
Right.
And, you know, the state, when they are allotting, using, based on average daily membership, which is what, when you see the actual ADM, that's what that is. It's how many students were enrolled in our schools during those first two months of the school year.
Are you asking what happened? Do we know what happened to the students?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, how do we, I mean, I'm sure principals could tell you exactly how many students they had and how many they lost, and I would, I think it'd be important to know some level of.
We do know the numbers and where we lost the students. They were primarily at the kindergarten level and certainly at the elementary level where there is a childcare crisis in the country. So there was a connection between when schools were closed and parents needed childcare. So many of the students that went on to private school or charter schools did not return. And you can see that at certain grade levels. But I think there's still quite a bit of theorizing across the nation about where are the children, what exactly happened. We also see large numbers of homeschooled children. And the number of African-American children homeschooled has quadrupled, while for other groups of children, it has doubled, but for African-Americans, it has quadrupled. So there are lots of studies going on. We are using ESER funds to use a PR firm to get out to our homeschool parents and to other parents to invite them back into the schools, to ask them to visit our magnet school programs, our Career Pathway programs, and to just re-enroll their children. So we do have an initiative to go out and get students to come back into Guilford County schools.
And this is such a priority across the state that the state board has used some of their ESER funding to allocate to districts for the location, the identification and location of missing children. And we just received an allocation of $495,000 for that purpose. So, and that's, you know, again, that's going to happen to every district across the state.
True. Well, that was my main concern is where are they? And I mean, I understand charter and private, that's, but then, yeah, you just worry about this, these folks in the abyss that, and it sounds like they're kindergarten first in the earlier grades.
Yeah.
Okay, and I'm just going to move along. I've got just two more pages. Again, I'll hold this up. The COVID relief spending, the federal grant, itemized list. And these are, just from my education, so the, for example, Supplemental K-12 Emergency Relief Fund, it looks like I've scribbled on this, but I think that's $88,648,591, that line item, Supplemental ESER 2.
Yeah, that's, that's one, that's part of what makes up our $287 million that we had for the application that we brought and the presentation that we brought to you. That 88 million is part of that 287 million dollars.
And we've spent a good, a good amount of that, which I'm pleased to see.
Yeah, those dollars expire a year before the dollars that, where you see the 198 million. Those two numbers make up the application and the plan that we brought you. And those dollars expire first, so we're spending those first.
All right, okay, so that may help because I saw the, sort of the timeline that we had, the four years.
Right.
So some, so some funds you have to spend sooner than others.
Right, some funds will expire September of 2022. There are some that'll expire September 23, and then there, the final expiration is September 2024.
And some we had other grants for, remember, from the Dell Foundation and others for Learning Hubs and tutoring. So we use those so that we can save some of the money for summer school coming up. So that's why you see zeros in some lines.
Yeah, and that, that's good, because I'll get to some of those zeros. What, can you just give examples? I think it's probably, I mean, I'll look at, first I'm looking at this and I'll take this and marinate on it more, but especially, you know, for the public to see it or for the first time, maybe just a couple of examples of what that emergency relief, what that is? Tactical things or?
Right, so these are a lot of, what we spent to date has been on the instructional materials and resources. We've spent a lot on bonuses, the board-approved bonuses for all of our staff, so that came out of these dollars. We've spent dollars on Wi-Fi and on the one-to-one devices. We spent that first 20 million that's up there, we spent a significant amount of those dollars on that. We've, we've spent money on summer learning last summer, and then we're planning our programs for this summer. So we expect to see a lot, a lot more spending in this summer. And then we've also ordered our buses, the buses that we're using to take high school students to GTCC so they can participate in the CCP. And we, we've got those are coming in. We've got, if you're asking what we've already spent, we've spent a significant amount on bonuses and incentives for our staff.
Yeah, and that's probably, as a follow-up, I'll send you some questions. I love to see breakdowns from, breakdowns of the breakdowns.
Okay.
I think they call it disaggregated, but yeah, just because it helps me and people asks. And I, sometimes I frankly, I know generically, but I, so we can do that. Certainly have time to do that in the coming weeks.
Mr. Tillman, as a reminder, we wanted to be transparent. So all of this is on the district website for the public as well, so they can go in and look at the spending. So if anyone asks you, you can direct them right to the site to see the spending.
Yeah, that's great. I mean, the more eyeballs, the better. And so, and then another question. So I'll just, I think you already answered this, but so down below in the, for example, the ESER 3, the cyberbullying suicide prevention grants, we have, we've not spent anything, but we have more time.
Yeah, and the state is still sending us dollars. I mean, they're still working through all the money that they got. And so, I mean, even, I'd say in the last three weeks, we got the driver training money. It's still coming to us in small pots and we just get notification that we've got these allocations. So that's, that's the reason you see there aren't dollars spent in some of these. And again, in some of these, as the superintendent mentioned, that we have got other funding that we're spending first, so these dollars are available for summer school.
It's also an issue of districts can't find the staff or the providers. And so many districts, well, every district I know has asked for an extension, especially when it comes to mental health, because everyone was looking for staff at the same time. And I think a few months ago, I shared with you the actual numbers of individuals in schools of education and schools of social work, clinicians, who were in the universities. And they're very few. Everyone's trying to contract with agencies at the same time. And districts have run into a lot of problems just trying to get contracts with technical assistance partners because everyone in the country is doing it at the same time.
In fact, I remember it was really good on us because we got all this in prior to a lot of the other districts. I remember there was, I mean, you all.
That's why we were rushing to get the applications in.
Yeah, I remember, so thank you for that because, I mean, I'm sure that's, that's helped. And just, I won't go through all these. But what's the difference, the homeless one and homeless two? I see there's, you know, quite a financial appreciable difference between homeless one category and on that same sheet at $150,000, and then homeless two ESER for $919,000. And we've spent, yeah, it looks like we paid taxes on it or something.
So it looks, it looks like it's just the way the state decided to allot them. When I look at the description and the purpose of the dollars, they're identical from in our, and what we've received from the state on how we're suspended. Its funds are provided to address the urgent needs of homeless children and youth stemming from the impacts of the novel coronavirus pandemic, including academic, social, emotional, and mental health needs. And again, the way the state got these dollars and the way they've allotted these dollars, it may be that it was part of the second federal spending bill versus the third federal spending bill. It just, it's very, it just, it seems to be very confusing in the way they've allotted these dollars. And unpredictable, so it's just a, here's these applications, they're due a week from Friday, fill them out and we'll disperse the, so like there's that too. So, and I would also just say that I don't know, I think for public consumption, the uniform guidance that's required in order to spend this money is really important to understand. There are many, many checks and balances in place. Everything has to be bid to the superintendent's point. There's many things we've bid and only gotten one response. Well, you can't award that, so then we put it back out. So we're in this cycle of trying to get the best services and it's, it's challenging. And, you know, there is also this timeline that goes along with once you bid, receive, review, award, bring to you, you know, if needed. All of those things are, you know, it's just not, you get it and then you can turn around and spend it.
Yeah, I mean, it's like there's a shot clock, I mean, two on it, so you.